Okay. Okay, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is the joint meeting between Meridian City Council and our esteemed Ada County Highway District Commission. So with that, I will ask for roll call attendance from our clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here.
President Arnold.
Here.
Vice President May.
Here.
Vice President Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, and welcome to the council chambers to our commissioners. Thank you for joining us. Okay, item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We adopt the agenda as published.
Good.
I have a motion as second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That also included...
Aye, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanagh. Item three is discussion topics. And I know first up is Cameron with an update on our comprehensive plan.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be with you. Wanted to give you just a brief update on where we are with our comprehensive planning process and some of the unique and exciting things that are happening with that. Just to kind of step through a little bit of some context, you know, the original plan here was adopted in 2002, and we've grown a little bit, as you know, since then. And it was the, you know, the initiative of this council that said, you know, it's probably time that we really take another hard get at our comp plan. There were, you know, updates here and there, 2011, and then a little bit more here and there on an annual basis, but really, this will be the most meaningful update that we've made in over 15 years. So we feel like this is going to be a fresh, new, and important look at our community. So just real quick, I don't need to rehash what you already know, but this is a, it's an important document for us. It's the guiding principles by which we'll move forward with our land use, and certainly just with some of the strategic policies that will accompany and follow the implementation of our comprehensive plan. So the process by which we've gone to, gotten to this point, you'll see that in future slides here, but is a really important process that we're going through to really define that future and that vision for our community. But as you know, there's these elements to a comp plan. The one that we're going to really focus in on is in chapter three, the strategic growth elements. That's where we have the folk eye, if you will, of our transportation policy as well as, you know, other elements. But you can see here, there's certain things that were required to include, and highlighted here are those things that are most pertinent for this discussion. And then, of course, you know, a big part of our comp plan, any comp plan, is the actual future land use map that accompanies it, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So the new plan, mentioned briefly, we hired a consultant group, Logan Simpson, in 2018. We engaged a very broad and diverse steering committee. Councilman Burnt is on that, as well as Justin's been a part of that committee, and a whole host of folks, developers, citizens, interested parties, consultants, people that are, you know, in the various industries, and feel like we've really got a good group that is just meeting consistently to keep this thing rolling. And it's a big, it's a big bite, but a great group that we've been moving through this with. Again, this is not a, you know, just throw out the old plan, but really taking the good from it and moving that forward and/or revamping the things that maybe need a little bit of a touch with our growth. And again, just kind of focusing in on a few key points here, the strategic growth management, public services piece, you know, internal to the city as well as just from our community, we are getting a lot of concerned citizens that are asking about this point. And so we're starting to see that borne out in the comprehensive plan drafting process and seeing those things in policy form. Of course, again, pertinent to this discussion is the transportation and economic development components of that. You know, really excited about our consultant, Kittleson, who's helping us with a master mobility plan, obviously in conjunction with our partners, Justin and others, at ACHD, Compass, and others are involved in transportation planning of our comprehensive plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about each of these and the specific elements, but this just gives you a taste of the things that were, are coming through in the comprehensive plan, rail, transit, freight, bike, pedestrian, and there's some other forward-looking things as well. But we, again, just appreciate ACHD's partnership in this. You know, you serve a key role, clearly, in our success of the growth of our community. And, you know, transportation, obviously, is a key issue for our community. We do look forward to an adoption. Well, we've closed at least the survey and public comment to the draft of the comp plan. We look forward to having it before our Planning and Zoning Commission likely in October, and then in front of our city council for adoption and discussion, and potential adoption, hopefully, in November, December at the latest. So what really is kind of the key themes that have been percolating through this? And it's important to note that as staff and as we approach this process, we really wanted to make this a Meridian document. This is not staff, this is, this is our community's document. And so we've, in my view, gone over and above and beyond to make sure we're engaging with our community. We're going out to them at community events, we're surveying them, we're calling them, we're holding city hall events, both telephonically as well as in person, just a gamut of things. We have a website dedicated to this process and trying to make it as very accessible and readable and understandable to our community as possible. And that's been well received. I'm happy to, you know, report that in the thousands of responses, that our community has come out and said, "These are the things that matter to us, and we want to see this in our future community." And so with that said, there's these five elements that have kind of percolated to the top. And again, the one we'll focus most on is the connected, connected community, as that's where, again, in the draft, where all of the transportation policy resides. So you can see here, here's just a few of those ideas that have really kind of hit the top here. You know, that it's, we're looking at different types of modes of transportation that we're planning for and designing it well, that it isn't just automobile-centric, but it's also pedestrian as well as bicycle, that there's a public transit element to it as well, then also utilizing our rail corridor for multiple uses, including freight. That's come through, certainly improved the efficiency of the system, you know, and that can be done, obviously, through planning, through design, and we'll talk a little bit more about the new technology as well, but just trying to, not being on the bleeding edge of those things, but certainly be progressive as that's what we're hearing from our community. Embrace Meridian's location. So as many of you know, it's no secret, we're right smack dab in the heart of our valley, and we feel everyone's transit concerns. So we want to make sure we're embracing that, that we are that heart and we want to be the, again, our community wants to be seen as that connected hub, if you will. And then lastly here, just to create transportation corridors, you know, we see this from a land use and future land use map perspective as a really key component to our future success. So are we identifying those corridors that then we can, again, couple with, you know, density discussions and other land use discussions that make the most sense for our community? So identifying those and making sure that we're planning accordingly to make that transportation as efficient as possible. So in the comp plan process, we did have a focus group, a subcommittee, if you will, of steering committee members as well as other participants, and you can kind of see there, we had multiple meetings. This was also in conjunction with our transportation consultant as well as the comp plan consultant. So they helped us facilitate this and really kind of come up with, what does our connected community look like? Of course, we, you know, that's kind of become this master mobility map and some of the, you know, the ideas that are incorporated in that. But we tried to make sure that we're rolling this into other transportation planning as well, so, you know, again, transit, land use, and of course, VRT's Valley Connect 2.0. So this is a lot of gobbledygook, but this is just some of those key draft policies that have been, that I wanted to pull out and we wanted to highlight for you all, that kind of just express how this is going to take shape, at least in policy form, as we move forward with this comp plan process. So, you know, we can always improve our coordination, and certainly that's the commitment of the city, city staff and our leadership, to really be as proactive and as helpful to our transportation partners as possible, including ACHD. We value the relationships that we have and just really appreciate that partnership, and we look forward to growing that and expanding that. You can see here, we want to very much partner to establish and implement a system of performance measurement. So how do we, how do we know that we're accomplishing the goals that we need to be accomplishing? So establish a metric to that and hold ourselves as city staff and others accountable to that so that we can be reporting to our, to our public and to our citizens on that progress. We really look forward to that as an opportunity, you know, let's celebrate those successes that do happen. Again, we do see our rail corridor as an obvious focus for our community and certainly for the valley regionally, but definitely for Meridian. So really working with our partners in the rail, you know, partnership and looking to best utilize that corridor, and again, including freight. Another here is 612N, again, directly with ACHD here, ACHD here is to more carefully examine the appropriateness of roundabouts. That was an issue that came up through the steering committee and the focus group, is how best to utilize that transportation tool, making sure that it's appropriate in the locations that they are. We found that they may be a little bit difficult for pedestrian use, and just making sure we're planning those correctly. And then, of course, working with ITD and ACHD to establish truck routes and design routes appropriate for the text. So making sure that we're conducting commerce appropriate throughout Meridian, and again, an efficiency element there as well. And then lastly, this is kind of our forward-thinking policy, but, you know, to evaluate a future transportation services, you know, whether it be rideshare or autonomous vehicles. And, you know, starting to try to lay the groundwork with that even now with some of our proposed plans with VRT, our fixed bus route with electric buses, that, you know, could very easily become autonomous bus routes. So that's kind of, again, kind of boiling down, you know, high level and then getting down a little bit into the policy of kind of what has come out of this process. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, the second bullet here, I don't want to walk away from that one, but certainly that's been an issue of transit just in general and the local option idea. And so that's something that has come out loud and clear, not only from the public, but also from the steering committee and focus group as well. And then, you know, the multimodal complete streets for residents and businesses. This is something that we see, we struggle with, to be honest, in our community. We'll have gaps in sidewalks, gaps in connectivity there, and how do we best plan and address those needs? Then continuing to work on our pathways and connectivity that way throughout our community, whether it be pedestrian or bike, but just the connection through development and seeing that as a priority. So with that, hopefully that was informative, and I look forward to any comments you may have. Again, just to express our gratitude, not only to our council for their support and seeing the need to go through this process, but also ACHD's partnership, certainly throughout, but ongoing, as, you know, it will represent a lot of work, but important work as we move forward. Stand for any questions that you may have.
Cameron, what are the next steps? What is the schedule as you roll out the comprehensive plan?
Great question, Mayor. So just briefly, I think probably the high points are, we need to, we're in the process now of closing out our public comment and survey, and our consultant is now incorporating much of that into what we'll call an updated draft that will go to our Planning and Zoning Commission. We're hopeful to be on an agenda here either late September or in October for that. And then having the, that discussion with planning and zoning based on an approval there, we're hoping to get to our council in the November timeframe.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Goldthorpe.
Yes, just a question regards to the rail corridor.
Oh, thanks. I thought the red meant it was on. Are you having any better success with the railroad, either the companies, or are they getting harder to deal with?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Goldthorpe, that's a great question. We have a pretty good working relationship with them. I feel like the, you know, not to get into too much detail, but we've had good contacts with them, we feel like there's progress being made with...
I'm well aware of the past on this. I just wondered specifically if it was getting any better, not in generalities.
I guess I would say that, yes, there's been some personnel changes, and they have indicated a greater attitude towards working with the city on the various items that we've collaborated on. And Compass has a group that they've put together that is...
I'm on it.
Good. That is putting a lot more detail together to start rolling that out. So you know that much better than anyone sitting up here. I think that's going to help, too. But the first thing was the relationship, and I think that we've made great progress with that.
Good. Thanks.
You bet. Other questions or comments? This is the first major update of our land use planning map, and that was, the first major effort was in 2002. Since then, we did the 10-mile area-specific plan, which is the first plan that land use and transportation were integrated into one plan. We're hoping that the involvement with Ada County Highway District with our comprehensive plan will be, will strengthen and help integrate those plans together as well. So I know that your staff has been part of our process, which we sincerely appreciate. We can't stress enough how important that involvement is. I think there was a recent article in the paper that talked about growth, and I think in Meridian, we've been pleased that we do grow to our comprehensive plan. I think more so we've underperformed than overperformed in the trips that we've put on the roads. But as we start continuing to grow up, it makes it even more important that the corridor widths are consistent with the ACHD plans. And while we can say our infrastructure, public infrastructure, that services that we provide is adequate, we can't speak on your behalf, and we need that information from all of you. So thank you to the staff that do step up and are engaged in our discussions. It's really important to center the Treasure Valley where we host everyone's cars, and makes it even more so. Again, you guys are really quiet. You were so thorough, Cameron, there are no questions.
I'll take that as a compliment. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner.
Our next item is an update on South Meridian from Ada County Highway District, and I...
And Madam Mayor, this is Luke.
Hi, Luke.
I apologize for interrupting the meeting. If it's possible to whoever speaks, I don't know if you guys address the podium or whatnot, to really speak into the microphone. It was a, it was a real challenge to hear from Cameron. I'm sure the information was really great, but I just wasn't in a place that I could hear. And I apologize for the inconvenience. But I could hear you, Madam Mayor, somewhat faint, but at least I could hear the words we're saying. I really couldn't hear more than two or three words at a time from camera.
Thank you. And if you can't, you have full permission to interrupt and say, "I'm sorry, I still can't hear." If you would have said that earlier, we would have told Cameron to articulate.
Madam Mayor, thank you for interrupting the meeting.
And I know I don't have to tell you, Justin.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Kavanagh?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just was saying, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. You bet.
I will do my best.
[laughter]
Yeah. No one has ever accused me of being quiet, so I think we'll be all right. I think we'll be all right. Well, Madam Mayor, council, and Commissioner President Arnold and members of the commission, for the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I'm the Planning and Programming Manager at the Ada County Highway District. Excuse me, I'm also the liaison to the city of Meridian. I come to almost all of your city council meetings. I'm not always here, but many of them, and I get to...
Thank you. You are a survivor.
And I appreciate that opportunity. I was going to go ahead and run through, there are several items on the agenda that will be covered in this single presentation, and as always, and I know you're not shy, if there's any questions or comments or thoughts, or you want further clarification, just interrupt me and we can have a discussion, or you can discuss amongst yourselves any of the topics that we have in front of you today. We did want to start by highlighting the fact that we're right in the middle of updating our Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. This is our annual update where we present to the cities our five-year capital construction plan. The plan contains all kinds of projects. There's a list that's included in front of you and hard copy of all of the projects that are scheduled in Meridian within the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. It's broken down by roads, intersections, bridges, community programs, which are the sidewalk and bicycle and safe routes to school projects, and then any other projects that may be listed there. So that is in front of you. And we are closing our public and agency comment period here coming up on August 19th, and the city of Meridian has always provided comments and requests to ACHD, and we appreciate that. And I work in that area, and I can tell you it matters. We take your requests seriously, and if you look and see when you request something and it's high on your list, it usually happens. So we're really proud of our ability to respond to your requests there. Along with that, our budget adoption hearing is coming up, and then Integrated Five-Year Work Plan adoption is scheduled for September. So this year, we do have a new map, so you have a hard copy in front of you, and if you go to our website, I just wanted to highlight this, you can actually bring up an interactive map, and you can zoom in and zoom out, all of the projects are there. You can click on them, it'll bring up all of the information about each individual project, and so I just want to highlight that. We're really proud of this tool. We created it two or three years ago, and it's enhanced every single year. And so we're, really, the plan is the map. I mean, it's a graphical depiction of all of the projects. So just to jump into the specific agenda items that you had requested, there was a specific request to look at South Meridian. And so I threw up a map here of the various projects, intersection, roadway, and maintenance projects planned for in the South Meridian area. And there's more detail about each of these projects in the information in front of you. What I wanted to highlight, and you can see that graphically, is that we are, in short order, looking to work on South 10-Mile Road, extending 10-Mile all the way down to Victory, and then improving that intersection, and there's a bridge right there also. This is a critical connection. When Overland was realigned several years ago, we included the connection to the new Overland, and this connection has become kind of a bottleneck. So that is a project that you can see highlighted there. And then I wanted to also focus your attention to South Locust Grove Road, which I know has been an emphasis area for the city of Meridian. Bridges, obviously roadway projects scheduled there that we're working on, and various other projects in that area. And then the other one is South Eagle Road, which obviously Eagle is a connection to the freeway. There's been a lot of development activity in that area. And in this updated Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, there's been a new emphasis on South Eagle Road and the importance of that connection up to the... and the importance of that connection up to the freeway. So as I stated, there's a lot more information in the packet I gave you. I also wanted to highlight a few bikeway projects that we show up as future projects here. But in our new Roadways to Bikeways Plan, we've identified those purple, you can see them, and some of them in purple there. And I guess I can use the mouse here. So this is a bikeway project that uses those local roads, the low-stress roads, we call them, to connect this part of South Meridian, the community. And then Stoddard has been a road that receives a lot of attention because of the new middle school there and some of the other challenges on that road. And we've identified that road as something we need to study and look at as something we can improve. So there's a lot going on in South Meridian. I think this reflects the city's emphasis in this area. And I'll have a little bit more graphical depiction of some of these projects as I move through the presentation. But I wanted to highlight that as a specific agenda item that you had requested. I can pause and see if you have any questions. All right, well, let's talk about community programs within the City of Meridian. This highlights, once again, those bikeway projects you can see that I talk about down in South Meridian. These dots represent specific protected crossings. The majority of these are associated with school walk routes. This is the project at Victory and Standing Timber. This is on South Locust Grove. I think that road is called either Palermo. It's in the list there. I'm not recognizing it immediately. And then this one's on South Eagle Road. This is the bikeway I mentioned in North Meridian. Of note, when we are working on these capital improvements along Ten Mile Road, those are not just roadway widening projects. We're actually adding a significant amount of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and various crossings that are indicated in those red dots on the Ten Mile Corridor. That's a practice that the Ada County Highway District has been doing for several years. When we are designing these wider facilities to accommodate the traffic demands from growth, we have been including sometimes multiple pedestrian signals on a corridor that either interact directly with schools. This one happens to interact directly with a pathway that the City of Meridian has established in this area. This is one of the main bike routes headed through Meridian. I call it the Eighth Street Corridor. I don't know if the city has an official name for it, but this one connects basically Pine Avenue and the middle school all the way up and through the Paramount subdivision. And I've written this many times. I live out in that part of Meridian. And the City of Meridian has made some enhancements along that corridor. ACHD has made some enhancements along that corridor, and it's really developing. And this project will continue to enhance that corridor with signage, striping, and other necessary improvements. Yep. So that's a kind of a snapshot of community programs. All of those are listed in your packet that I handed out, and I'm glad to answer any specific questions on those. I did want to highlight, kind of in general, and this is not specific to the City of Meridian alone, but as stated, the City of Meridian receives a lot of traffic to and through the city. And so I wanted to highlight the progress under the Commission's direction that ACHD has made on some of these key corridors over the last several years. You can see that, and this one's really exciting to highlight, actually, this year, relatively soon, this Cloverdale Corridor, some of which has direct impact on the city's eastern boundary, we're going to be removing this corridor from our, the northern section, we call it, from our priority corridor list because it'll be complete, and it'll match our master street map designation. So all of the intersections, all of the roadways along that corridor will be complete. And one thing we didn't expect, and unfortunately, it was in response to a tragedy, was we were able to include the bridge over the I-84, which was not expected as when we thought and considered that plan. But we were able to do that because of the direction of the Commission in response to the tragedy that destroyed the bridge. Another one we can take off very shortly, and I live very close to this project. It's near and dear to my heart. It's being striped right now, and there's just a little bit left. But the Linder Corridor, basically connecting the improvements we've done on Eustick up to Chindon, will be complete. And we get a lot of questions, "Well, why did you do that before Ten Mile?" There's a lot of different reasons behind it, but I'm glad we're going to get that done before we do Ten Mile, because there's going to be a lot of pressure on that corridor as we do the Ten Mile Road. So thanks for understanding. And then you can see, we have done a whole lot of intersections along Fairview Avenue. That corridor has been an emphasis area for the ACHD Commission, and we have completed some of those projects directly, right in the middle of the City of Meridian in association with the split corridor project, and that's been a huge success. So looking forward, as you look at this map, the next one to go off the map is going to be Ten Mile from Overland all the way up to Chindon Boulevard, because these two segments of Chindon within this Integrated Five-Year Work Plan are scheduled to be completed next year in fiscal year '20. So these are critical projects. There's development related with this. There's a STARS agreement. There's all kinds of stuff going on with those projects. But at the same time, Chindon Boulevard, and this isn't directly associated with ACHD, but we have several partnership projects with them, is also going to be improved. And I know the city is very aware of that. So really, the transportation dynamic in Northwest Meridian is changing because of all these improvements. And a lot of the, as you can see, a lot of the emphasis is moving to the south, because that's the next area of need that we have identified. And so with that, I'm glad to stand for any questions you might have. I hope that answers the majority of the questions you had on the agenda related to South Meridian, community programs, and then projects in general within the City of Meridian.
Counsel and Commissioner, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam.
Justin, I noticed that there's going to be a lot of work on Linder, which has already started. But then going south, Pine to Franklin, and Eustick to Cherryville. What about Cherry to Pine? It just seems like we're like, why are you bringing in all improvements except for this half a mile void?
It's a really good question, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Milam. That specific segment between Cherry and Eustick, if you're familiar with it, has quite a few challenges. And including a lot of front-on housing. There's a park that has a specific access associated with it. And there's a very large canal on the north quarter of that segment of roadway that really squeezes things down. It's going to create a lot of complexity from a design and a cost perspective. Certainly, it can be widened. Our strategy is hold off as long as we can and improve around it so we're not widening that road until it absolutely has to be done. And that strategy, we've employed on several other segments, not only in the City of Meridian, but across Ada County. And certainly someday, as directed by the Commission, we can do that project. But we want to make sure when we do it that it's absolutely necessary and needed because of the incredible impacts it will have on the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor, sorry, you confused me a little bit, Justin, because you mentioned Cherry to Eustick. And that's on the, that's in the plan for 2020, looks like. Oh, that's Meridian. I'm looking at Meridian Road.
Yeah, that's Meridian Road.
Yeah. Oh, MacMillan, Eustick to MacMillan. Yeah, and then up south. But from Pine to, basically Pine to Eustick, there's nothing. So people are using that as a transportation corridor to get home. It's just going to end up with a big bottleneck.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Milam, you're not incorrect that there will be some segments on Linder that are not improved. We're hoping that with all the improvements we've done to Ten Mile, that that can really provide the connection. Ten Mile has the interstate connectivity. Linder, as you're very aware, does not have an overpass. If the overpass moves forwards, if other things happen, I think the pressure on Linder in that southern section will even be greater. So it's certainly something we're monitoring and taking into account.
Justin, can you tell me, I was trying to do the math, but I thought it was easier to just ask. How much does a typical intersection improvement cost on a major arterial?
Madam Mayor, members of the Council and Commission, it's a tough question. It really does depend on the specific intersection and whether it is, how large that intersection is, whether it's a roundabout, whether it's a standard signal. But if you look in the documentation that I provided, you can see a construction cost ranging from, you know, four to seven million dollars for major intersections. And so that's a pretty good range. So if you held me up against the wall and said, "How much is it going to cost?", I'd probably say, you know, five to six, five million dollars. That's what we're chart, that's what we're, that's what we see those costs about right now. It used to be probably cheaper. You may have remembered back maybe 10, 15 years ago when we were paying two or three million dollars. That is not the case in the current environment. We have been pretty much paying those costs for construction for the last several years.
I think, you know, the growth patterns and what is available on the five-year plan reminds me of as we were starting to see North Meridian start to explode, and we form these public-private partnerships with the development community to widen intersections ahead of schedule, ahead of the five-year plan. And some of them even weren't yet on the five-year plan. Is that something that you'd be interested in dialogue with the city and the development community to do ahead of schedule to be paid back through impact fees? There are a number of intersections that need to see that improvement, that are still stop-signed intersections. And the idea at the time of the North Meridian Plan was, let's move traffic as efficiently as we can. Is that a dialogue that you would be at the table with to consider?
Madam Mayor, members of the Commission and Council, certainly I'll let our Commissioners weigh in on this specific topic. You're right, we've done that in the past. And I know, I don't know if it was at our last joint meeting, and Gary's here, but I think we've discussed a similar strategy or conceptualized a similar strategy for the South Meridian area in certain key locations. And I know at that last meeting, the Commission did certainly indicate interest in that. Fitting all those pieces together and making that work, I think, is totally possible. And certainly, at the staff level, we've had successful developer cooperative projects for many years. And so certainly, if the Commissioners want to weigh in on that, I'm glad to listen. But there's a lot of things that have to go into that, but certainly, staff is open to it.
And a lot of those public-private partnerships have really been in Meridian. Initially, we had Winston Moore and Roger Anderson do it on Overland and Eagle Road. Then we had Winston Moore and David Turnbull do it on Eagle and Eustick. And then we had the North Meridian activity that had a lot of different players as part of that. It has been successful on our side of it. I don't know how it looks on ACHD's side of it, but it does get those improvements in at today's prices, which has historically proven that today's prices are better than tomorrow's. So, Madam Chair?
I was just going to say, we love those projects. The ones you mentioned have worked very well for ACHD to get some much-needed improvements much sooner than they otherwise would have happened. So we're always open to discussing possibilities there.
I'd love to hear that. We did dust off the North Meridian area plan that we found, as I'm starting to not purge, but go through all my files. And I handed it over to Robert to see if we could use that as some kind of a foundation to start those discussions again.
We'll look forward to it.
Awesome. And I think we even have our Transportation Commission that's interested in maybe leading some of that, so. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And Commissioner.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Can I add a question to Justin while he's here? Well, a comment and a question, because I like to say it with the Commission here as well. But we benefit greatly having you at our council meetings. And the Commission needs to know the time that Justin spends with us is not only so valuable to us as a council in making our decisions, but to the public as well. We've seen you address confusion amongst the public at times about some of the analysis that you do and the Commission does in making their decisions. You do an exceptional job of that, too. So it helps us and the public. So we appreciate you here every week. My question on the Five-Year Work Plan, the broad question is to describe the funding assumptions that go into making it. And the specific question is, using your current tenet of budget, is there anything within this Meridian's portion of the Five-Year Work Plan that is included with the tenet of budget as presented for your August 21st hearing that if funding isn't provided as the draft budget proposes, would come off the plan?
Madam Mayor, members of the Council and Commission, I don't really know if I can answer that specifically. We do certainly use revenue assumptions to build our documents, both our budget and our Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. Ultimately, ACHD's staff looks to the Commission to provide us with the ultimate determination on the revenue available for those projects. Now, if there is less revenue available than we initially anticipate, at this point, that would be direction we would receive from the Commission. And I can't say, because we haven't been told, what projects would need to be modified or delayed associated with any type of new revenue.
So, Madam Mayor, to be more specific, and every city wrestles with the same question. The big example in some of the available revenue is some of the, some or all of the available 3% that can be utilized to create some funding. So, and you make assumptions in building a Five-Year Work Plan. So is the plan that we have in front of us assume that that funding source is utilized each of the five years? Or does it assume that it's not used at all?
The draft Integrated Five-Year Work Plan presented to you today assumes an increase, the increase that you described.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Baker?
I guess I'll just expand on that a little bit. It assumes, with the miracle of compound interest, that if it's taken this year, and then it accrues every year, it doesn't assume it's going to be taken next year as well. But for this year, it's the 3% plus the growth. And then through the miracle of compound interest, over the next few years, that adds up to about $20 million. So, I mean, that could, that's the revenue that's there for the Five-Year Work Plan, along with the other, what we currently have. That's additional.
So it only assumes that you take it this year and not the subsequent years?
You can only, well, for this, yes.
For the projections.
But if you don't take it this year, because you're not taking it this year, that would mean $20 million over the next, I guess, five years, does not get placed into the Five-Year Work Plan. You don't make that up by not taking it this year and then taking it next year, so.
Madam Mayor?
If that makes sense.
Yes. Yes.
That's really helpful, and that kind of hits to the crux of the question, is that compounding effect works both ways? So, again, we all wrestle with the same issue, so knowing if a plan such as this includes not only 3%, perhaps for 2021, but assumes the subsequent four years also would include utilizing that 3%, greatly expands the compounding effect, which would generate the numbers big enough to fund all of these.
Yeah.
But if that's not the case, then the available funding would be much smaller if it's only a single year of compounding over the five.
And just for clarity, and there's some differences between our budget revenue assumptions and our integrated five-year work plan revenue assumptions. In the integrated five-year work plan, you know, the further you get out with revenue assumptions, the less specific they become, but we do include some level of increase to our property tax revenue throughout the plan. It is throughout the plan, so just to be clear on that.
Yeah, and we can talk about that. It makes sense.
Sure, yeah.
It seems like it's a yes or no question, but it might not be fair the way I phrased it. That the 3% is included as part of the math to create this draft plan, each of the five years, or it's not?
I think the simplest answer is yes, but there's nuance to that response. I mean, it's, because of the way revenue assumptions are created, yeah. But we do assume, based on the direction we received from the commission early on when we were developing the plan, that we would increase, we should assume revenue increases associated with our major sources of revenue, which include property taxes, throughout the life of the plan every year, every year. It's, the reason I'm parsing words is, is revenue increase assumption doesn't necessarily mean, it doesn't necessarily tell staff where those revenue increases are coming from, and I think that's a critical distinction. We may use, ultimately, it's a number you're trying to get to, and we may use an assumption associated with the 3% or the growth, and I know there's broad discussion amongst the commission about that specific revenue source, but ultimately, what staff needs to know is, should we assume greater revenue on an annual basis? How that happens, there's different ways to look at it.
Thanks, Justin.
Any further comments or questions? Mr. Goldthorpe.
And Councilman Borton, this may help you professionally to understand, anything we say may be held against us in the court of opinion.
Write that down in pen. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you. Item C3 is a presentation on community programs and updates. Did that, that was included in that? Okay. So, the community programs is listed in this packet on page seven.
Yes, Madam Mayor, sorry, I should have clarified that. You have the community programs listed in the packet on page seven, also page eight and page nine would constitute all of the different community programs projects. And I think the other item on the agenda was general discussion of projects within Meridian, and that was meant to be covered in my previous presentation also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I guess that covered items D or B and C, and so, we'll move to chip seal updates. We are so excited to hear about it. You know, I know it's everyone's favorite topic, but I'll tell you what, when that project is done, it's beautiful, so.
Madam Mayor.
I may feel differently than most, but I think it's beautiful.
I came in on Locust Grove, Fairview, Locust Grove to Pine. It's like glass now. It's great.
Well, I will tell you that, you know, we felt like a city under siege by the chip seal program, but as those get done, I know our citizens, it's two or three weeks of, well, when is this going to be done, to now, it's, it's an awesome thing.
Except I did get a chip in my windshield.
Well, our small business.
Even though I was driving the speed limit and leaving space.
Our small businesses appreciate it, they're called glass companies, and anyone in the automobile service area feels that this is a great boost to their economy.
Thank you for those kind words, Madam Mayor. Tim Nicholson, Deputy Director of Maintenance for the Ada County Highway District.
And the great news that I would love to share with you today is that we are done chip sealing for 2019. We got completed on Sunday, just this past Sunday, so we were able to do 421 lane miles this past year in 68 working days, which was about 12 working days ahead of schedule. That's using both of our crews. That being said, we're not 100% done, we still have some fog sealing to do, and the maps that I just handed out to you, that first page with the blue and the red on it shows our level of completion. If it's blue, that means it's completely done, being chipped and fogged. If it's red, that means it's been chipped but not fogged yet. Those boxes that are highlighted in pink are where we're planning on being this week. And if I could direct you to our interactive map, that's where this picture was taken from, it's updated daily, it's on, and it's linked on our website. So, if you or any of your constituents want to see our progress, you're more than welcome to go take a look at that on a daily basis and see where we're at. We're expecting about two more weeks before we're done with the fog seal. At the current rate, and as long as the temperatures and weather holds out, and the smoke stays out of the valley, we'll be in great shape to have that completed. Just for some metrics, like I said, we're about 73% done with our fog seal right now, and, again, we placed just under 5,200 tons of oil in those 68 working days. So, the crews are really, really moving, they had a great year, the weather cooperated with us, so we were pretty fortunate to be where we're at this early in the season. We started a little earlier, I think it worked out really well. Of course, the big push is always to get done in the school areas before school starts, and we're on target to meet that goal in the next two weeks, and that includes getting paint and pavement markings completed in time for school as well, so. With regards to 2020, unless you all have any more questions on 2019, that second map that I provided for you shows where we're planning to be in 2020, which is South Meridian area. The way our zones are split up currently, Meridian kind of gets hit three years in a row. We have North Meridian, Central Meridian, and then South Meridian. You see for 2020, it's bounded on the north by the interstate, on the west by McDermott, on the south by Lake Hazel, and on the east by Five Mile. And with next year's chip seal program, we're planning to do 458 lane miles, a little bit more than this year. We still expect to take roughly 80 working days, so 40 for each crew, based on our regular production capabilities with those two crews. Planning on starting again in late May after Labor, excuse me, Memorial Day, and hopefully be done about the same time, early August, again, next year, so. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you so much. Counsel and Commission, any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, I just want to say thank you very much for having us today, and I'm really encouraged and extremely pleased that, just since I took office in January, this is our second joint meeting, and I do agree, and I'm sorry Cameron's not here, he did an awesome job presenting your plan, that one of the priorities is to have close collaboration and coordination prior to public hearings, and I think that's the only way we're going to move the needle and get things done, is working closely together. So, thank you, and I look forward to our next meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from counsel? Again, if you'll pass along our appreciation to getting in ahead of schedule and certainly before school starts, that's a really big deal.
It's always a big goal for us, too, to hit that mark.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and item 3E, update on other projects within the city of Meridian. I think you already covered that. Wow, we should have just said A, B, and E, but you were not clear. Counsel, any questions further for ACHD staff? Any comments?
Madam Mayor.
Not a question, but a comment, I just wanted to say thank you to our ACHD friends, and especially Justin, for the hard work you, dedication, the time spent with us. Thank you so much for the friendship, and thank you so much for the partnership that we enjoy, so looking forward to more dialogue and much, you know, much more agreement. Thank you.
Anything further? If not, I would.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kavner.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I don't know if it was covered, I just couldn't hear it, has there been any progress on Linder Road overpass? And what collaboration is going on between the city and the highway district around that project?
I guess, just the update, it was in purple, so it was a future, an unfunded project. An update from Director Wong is, there is no interest from Idaho Transportation Department. They have no plans for any new overpasses, period. That has been, it was relayed to Director Wong, but it was also reiterated at Compass and as a very strong message from Idaho Transportation Department. So, I guess, Mr. Kavner, ACHD has indicated an interest in their portion, but without the bridge, the overpass, it seems like a mute point anyway at this point. Okay, anything else from counsel or the commission? If not, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Commission, would you like to have a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Okay, you adjourn with us.